Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Ralphs.
Here.
Mario. Ralphs.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Cujo.
Here.
Campanella.
Here.
Doc Lodge.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Chad Gordon.
Here.
Great. Before I turn it over to, I guess, Betty, I just want to thank everyone, particularly planning commissioners who take a lot of time out of their day to do this in weeks and months. So I know it's a lot of work and you don't get paid a whole lot, right? And I just want to appreciate your work for this. With that, Ms. Weis?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Good morning, council and planning commission. I'll be giving a staff overview report for a number of topics that we'd like to update you all on today. We did prepare a council agenda report on all these same topics, so this overview will be brief and I'll be identifying the few items where we would welcome and expect good discussion, full discussion today. So the agenda is a combination of a briefing and a number of topics for discussion. So our agenda, I'll begin first with the general plan implementation. And attachment one to your council report is a schedule table, and I'll just work from that document and highlight the work that's been accomplished and what's currently on our plate and what we see coming in the near future. And then the topic for discussion, primary topic for today, is a general plan implementation element, which is the average unit density incentive program and discussing the review process. Somewhat related certainly is the role of the design review boards, the architectural board of review, and the historic landmarks commission. I do want to touch on that program. There are a number of current assignments that are active, again, some pending and on hold. Then, under development and environmental review activity, I want to make a few comments about the environmental review following up from the Plan Santa Barbara EIR and the growth management and traffic strategy as that relates to environmental review. Then zoning, in the zoning program, we want to update you all on the hedge ordinance work as well as our upcoming project for the new zoning ordinance. And then my overview will stop at that point. I won't be presenting any information on the zoning information reports. That will be a separate discussion once councilmember Hotchkiss, who's abstaining, will get through the whole rest of the agenda and then we'll return to that topic. Okay, so first, with regard to the general plan implementation, again, attachment one shows the primary projects that we initiated in what we're calling Phase One of the implementation program. And quite a bit has been accomplished in the last year and a half or so. And you all have been very much involved in all these, so I'm not really going to cover what they are in any detail. But of course, we did have the adoption of the housing element, the historic resources element, the average unit density size program in terms of the ordinance adoption. And again, it's ongoing now with implementation. The non-residential growth program, which is the allocation of square footage for non-residential projects, that ordinance was adopted. The planning commission and city council reviewed and approved zoning and general plan map amendments. That is still ongoing with respect to the coastal zone, but the actions for changing and other, the rest of the city have been finalized with your approvals. We are currently working on the Highway 101 air quality setback program, and we expect to be at ordinance committee in November on that project. We also are working on the emergency shelter ordinance, which is a requirement related to our housing element, so that's a current project. I do want to note that the housing element, because we have been participating in the SB CAG statewide program to develop a sustainable community strategy, we have a, our next round for the housing element is actually due next year. We'll be working on it starting shortly, but through 2014. It does need to be certified by the state by February of 2015, and that puts us now in an eight-year cycle. So we won't be, we're addressing the housing element boom-boom right now just because of the timing of that. So that's a big project again, although we see it more as an update, not a full, or more of an amendment rather than a full update. So we have been working closely with SB CAG, and those recommendations, I believe, have been to the board. Climate action plan was adopted. A current project underway now is the safety element, and we'll be having a hearing at the planning commission on that next week, and then it'll be returning or going to council for adoption. The adaptive management program was discussed at your last joint meeting and following the input that we had, which was great. We received a lot of good input at this meeting and in other discussions. So we produced our first year report of the adaptive management program. I mentioned the emergency shelter, building height over 45 feet. That ordinance was recently adopted by the council. The alternative transportation demand analysis, that concept, that project has been postponed as transportation planning has been working on other neighborhood east side studies and such. Arts master plan has not really been active for us in the last six months or so. What we have been working on and was on a council agenda on consent, so you really didn't discuss it, but was that we did apply for a local coastal program grant. There are many grants available right now. They're rolling out a number of grants, given that throughout the state, the need to update local coastal programs is a high priority for the coastal commission, and it really is becoming a very high priority and pressing need for us as well. We are in discussions with the coastal commission staff, still very much trying to figure out what is the scope, phasing, approach, and schedule to update, to comprehensively update our local coastal program. And that will depend largely on what grant funding that we get as well, you know, how comprehensive and extensive we can be in the update. We do have primed and ready the land use updates in terms of the general plan and zoning map that I mentioned before. We also have, with the adoption of the historic resources element, primed those coastal matters to come fold in. And we are looking to update the hazard section as well, given that we're updating the safety element. But the coordination and such, it's a very complicated equation, given, to some degree, the limited resources of the coastal commission staff themselves, and just how extensive. It's like a whole new general plan update, really, in effect, of what it is for the coastal area. So that's a very big item. That's my overview on the general plan implementation. The next slide. Yes?
Betty, when you talked about the 375 housing element update, and you said that's done periodically, and so, we had our discussions with wrapping up the general plan update. Was that, I thought we had encapsulated our 375 requirements within that. Is that, was that different, or is that, you know, are we going to dance that dance again all the time for this 375?
Councilmember Ralphs, they are distinct and different, but they're also very much related. So the legislation for the 375 with the sustainable strategy did have an element in terms of the housing elements, the RENA numbers, and including the land use and housing in your regional transportation planning. And so what we were able to do, working with SB CAG, is the group was very successful, really, and they relied quite a bit on the information that we had during Plan Santa Barbara, our transportation model, the policies. But it was a countywide effort, the sustainable strategy. So the city's ability to participate was aided by the climate action plan work the council had done and the Plan Santa Barbara. But really, that strategy under 375 is a regional plan led by SB CAG. And then, again, the relationship between that effort and our general plan is we do need to update and have newly certified, again, our housing element, even though we only had it certified at the end of 2011. It's now due again. But after that, it will be on an eight-year cycle. So there's, that's a benefit. Okay.
Ms. Weis, I'm interested in our compliance with Senate Bill Two. It's under the general plan.
Yes.
Implementation. Could you tell us a little bit about what we can expect going into the fall? It says here that we anticipate municipal code changes will occur late this year. So what that review and approval process will look like?
Yes. The emergency shelter ordinance was briefed at one of these meetings a while back, and staff had recommended that we go to the planning commission with a draft ordinance based on staff working with the city attorney and the housing element possible action item, which actually isn't just a possible act, it's a required action item, to have a zone, land use allowances for emergency shelters without the requirement of a conditional use permit. That's basically what the Senate Bill Two is about. But it was at one of these meetings that the council and commission discussion led to the direction that council wanted to scope that ordinance first. And they asked staff to further explain what Senate Bill Two allowed and required, the combination of, you know, what options the council might have. So our first step is, well, we're preparing for that council meeting. So we will be at council to provide direction. The next step following that could be ordinance committee for the first drafting of the ordinance, or it could be council direction. It's clear enough that, you know, we go straight to planning commission with a hearing. And that is a project that staff's working with the city attorney on as well. Okay. So the primary item for discussion today is the average unit density program and the review process. And we have had a few projects, as I think you all are aware, monitoring what this program might look like. And in fact, we really encouraged, through council and planning commission direction, applicants to start working on rental housing projects and looking at the new average unit density size program, and come in with projects as soon as they were, they were ready. So we've had a little bit of a transition period while the ordinance was not yet even adopted. We have been working with people, and they've been looking to this program to build the needed housing that's been identified. So projects have been at the ABR and HLC, and we did invite those board members and commissioners to participate today, and we provided the staff report with our attachment two, which explained staff's thinking on this average unit density review process. We provided that to all the ABR, HLC, and you all. We fully expect that today's discussion is just going to put out some ideas and questions, but staff thought pretty deliberatively about it, and we shared with you in the staff report what we think would be a good way forward at this time, our recommendation. So I do see some members of the ABR and HLC here, and I hope they have an opportunity to get to the microphone and participate when this discussion item is before you. So we start, I think, an important part to start here is thinking, well, what are the objectives of the AUD program? And one was clearly to encourage rental housing development as a very much needed type of housing in our community. And along those lines, and I'm thinking back to hearings at the planning commission, there was a lot of positive input on the program being more incentive-based and thinking ahead of what are the development issues. And so really trying to simplify the process and allow more flexibility. So those are certainly objectives, as well as quality design. And staff believes that it is quite possible to achieve all these objectives, maybe sometimes with a little more work than you might anticipate, but certainly all these goals of the city, we believe, are achievable. So how do we think we can best achieve the objectives of the program and the general plan overall? One is, we do think that some adjustments and changes in the process are needed, particularly at the design review boards. And staff sees that our role needs to shift, and we need to provide more support to those review bodies so that as they're looking at these projects, they understand the policy from a broad base, as well as an understanding of the trade-offs and some inherent complexities and controversy that may come with these housing projects. I'd like to note and just have folks recall that in all the years that you've been doing this work, a two-unit new duplex next to someone's home, or a mixed-use project downtown, pick a year, any year, 1979, 86, 92, that can raise concerns to the community, both the immediate community and neighbors, as well as the community at large. So I don't think that the AUD is the first time that residential projects raise concern, again, in a neighborhood or a community. So a concern I have is that some of the talk is, oh, this is AUD. Is this a new program? How do we respond? You know, let's calm down. We've responded, and our review process works really quite well, and it has, but does it need adjusting? Yes, we believe that it does, because, again, it is a new program, and we are looking to make some changes. And we'd very much like to hear from you all what you think about these ideas for, including a coordinated staff review and process at the design review board. So as you saw in our recommendation, we think that access to the design review process early on, as it has been at a conceptual level, is really important. We notice those meetings. A project comes to the ABR, HLC with a notice to the neighborhood, so members of the public come very early in the process to become informed about the project and ask questions. We think that initial hearing is really important for the boards as well as staff, to hear the range of questions that people do have about the projects. So following one meeting, what we're recommending is that the applicant work with staff through a coordinated land development team process, similar to the processes we use now for projects going to planning commission. And we will be pulling in whatever city program or staff might be needed. If we hear in a neighborhood that they're concerned about flooding, you know, we can be checking with building and safety and public works about flooding issues. If it's a parking-related issue, which we do anticipate people will have questions about parking, our transportation staff is certainly part of a coordinated team effort. So we would like to have the projects return to the design review board with staff support and a memo to the board and commissioners, giving them a full range of feedback and the community information about the questions they raised, but also focus on the AUD, the housing project itself. How does it meet the objectives of the general plan? And how does the project comply with the compatibility criteria? You can see on the board here, every week when the ABR, or every other week when the ABR and HLC meet, all the projects that they review have any note, such as adding dwelling units with a residential project, they're to consider these compatibility standards. And staff does currently assist the boards in some regard with these compatibility findings, and we see just beefing that up as well. There may be some need for project-specific conditions, and if that's the case, that would be included. But one important thing that we're recommending be an adjustment in the review process, is that staff would also have a recommendation to the ABR or HLC as to whether or not the project should be referred to the planning commission. Again, with the initiation of the AUD, there's been question as to what the role of the planning commission might have in the AUD process. And we've answered this question a number of times. Rental projects have historically not gone to the planning commission. And when you look at the housing elements that we've prepared over all the years in our review process, we've explained that an incentive towards rental housing development is that its review process is more simplified. It does not require a special land use approval by the planning commission to build rental housing. So the projects currently do not go to the planning commission. But under the AUD, might the planning commission have a role in helping the success of the program overall? And we think that there is. Again, there's some inherent controversy that may come with these projects. The planning commission is accustomed to dealing with the broader community-wide issues. There could be benefit in that. So in the existing ordinance, there is already a referral mechanism that the ABR ordinance contains, as does the HLC ordinance, that they may refer projects to the planning commission for comments on highly visible projects. And so what we would plan to do is propose to the ABR or HLC staff's recommendation. We think this project should be referred to the planning commission for these reasons. And if you agree, what questions or issues would you like the planning commission to discuss when the project goes to them? That's what we're suggesting could be a process to involve the planning commission. Again, we would like this process to be expedited and fairly simple. So when we're working with the board and commissions and the applicant, we're proposing that the staff report to the planning commission would be very simple. It would be the same memo that went to the design review boards, along with their minutes and questions, and that we would ask a member or two from whatever body is reviewing it to also attend the planning commission meeting so there can be some question and answer, and focus on the questions that the board and commission and public have raised in the project. So it wouldn't be a new planning commission decision, but it would be planning commission as an advisor. And we suggest that at that planning commission meeting, it would be important that the commission summarize majority opinion. We don't think that this is the same as a concept review where the planning commission may have a range of comments, and the staff and the applicant kind of look at that range of issues. Really, it would be focused direction back to the design review is what we're recommending, and that it be advisory, not an appealable action. If you add it as an appealable action, then there's more complication and steps in the review process, in our opinion. Are there other options? Certainly, there are. We would expect today that your discussion of this issue is, what about the process works now? We explained our thought process that we started. What are the objectives of this program? What works now? What might need to be adjusted to better support all the objectives? What role would the planning commission have and why? And we felt that to just try to decide, well, a project of a certain size has to have planning commission review. We might pick the wrong size. We might send more projects to the planning commission simply based on size. We think that the flexibility of the current ordinance is something to really consider. If the direction is, okay, let's start there, but let's keep in mind that we might want to formalize a requirement, that's certainly an option as well, in which case, we do need to amend the ordinance to create a new requirement for the planning commission. But staff certainly sees our next step as moving forward, working with the ABR and the HLC on the overall broad objectives of the AUD program, as well as just related mechanics of receiving a staff report and recommendation, should you agree with that direction. So this would be the primary topic for discussion, once I run through the other topics quickly, was what we thought, and we can turn back to this at that time, if that's okay with you all. Okay, thanks. So again, design review and historic preservation, that program has quite a few projects on their plate, as is typical, and we're making some good progress. We do see, working with the design review boards on the average unit density, as well as some SEQA training related to use of the Plan Santa Barbara EIR. Other things underway right now is a review of the sign process. As you know, we did change the review process for sign committee a few years back related to budget constraints, and so we're analyzing that right now. We'll be discussing it with both ABR and HLC as to how it's working, what are we reviewing, how might we go back to the way it was before or maintain. So that's underway. There's a minor amendment needed in the JAPALA guidelines. We have landscape ordinance amendments that we're working on. We have been updating the solar database, but I did want to let you all know that we would not be having solar awards this year. That program has really been dependent on having an intern and a staff who can manage it, and we had to leave this year. So this is another year where we won't, we're not able to do that. And we're also working on antenna and wireless database and mapping. We did provide in your report, again, an attachment that lists all the projects that we have going. We would like to complete those projects and take up a new, much-needed project that's been talked about for years, is looking to develop multi-unit design guidelines. And these design guidelines would apply in a variety of situations, both, we anticipate for the El Pueblo Viejo area, but our idea for right now is that we would start with the ABR as the lead in looking to develop multi-unit design guidelines. And it would be a process where we would look to see what do our guidelines already provide, how do other communities address this? And it would be a fairly comprehensive project, because, again, both boards review multi-unit projects, and we already have an awful lot of guidelines. But there seems to be a gap, even though we have 19 different guidelines. This subject specifically really is not very well addressed, and the council has had concerns about multi-unit development in neighborhoods. Even just when I'm saying multi-unit, even to the level of two dwelling units in the R2 area, has raised some concerns on certain projects. So that is something we'd very much like to get to, and we think that at your next six-month meeting, the list of items that are currently underway, we'll be reporting have been completed, and we'll be ready to initiate the multi-unit design guidelines. Under historic preservation, our urban historian and interns have made a lot of progress on database designations, updating the potentials list. The historic landmarks commission has held a number of hearings on the potentials list. We're also working on citywide guidelines related to historic districts. The staff has been to the ordinance committee, working with the city attorney on a historic district ordinance. Again, a lot of work related to our database is necessary in order to support both general plan policies for identifying resources more readily when the projects are in proximity to historic resources, and the funding that we received for this fiscal year to do a search engine. And so that project is very active in the historic preservation program. Parcel Tags is our database. That refers to identifying parcels within our database so that the proximity within 200 feet, 250 feet, or 500 feet of a resource, we can map it. That's what Parcel Tags. Okay. In development and environmental review, I mentioned that the, in order to implement the traffic management strategy, staff has identified the need to, or and desire to just have a full explanation of how we use the model, what are the city's thresholds and standards for the cumulative impacts that were part of the EIR and the adoption of the general plan. And then, as we explained in the growth management program, the projects that would result in a project-specific level impact, in other words, using too much capacity with one project, is what we consider a project-specific impact. We want to document all of that, and return to city council is an element of our master environmental assessment, explaining our SEQA review process for traffic impacts. We are also, this has been a project going on for a few years, looking to update throughout the MEA, our master environmental assessment, and our initial study form. This is something the planning commission is certainly familiar with, trying to reduce the size of those documents by having a more comprehensive MEA that can just be referred to. So that's an ongoing effort. Also, the next note is the SEQA guidelines that we're using for Also, the next note is the SEQA guidelines that we're using for applying the Plan Santa Barbara EIR to subsequent projects. And so we're working on that. And in this group, the development environmental review, we have some of the case planners that would be assigned to support the design review boards with the AUD projects, or when the AUD projects also come to the Planning Commission. And an attachment to your staff report had a list of pending projects, and there is quite a bit of development activity still actually going on, and some new ones coming down the pike here. You all, I think, are familiar with the project that was sometimes referred to as the Burkas Project, out next to Lacumbra. People are looking at that property still. Between the Galleria and Lacumbra Plaza is also property owned by Grace Lutheran, and they're looking to possibly do a project, so there could be some activity in the Upper State Street area there. The Nan Caro property in the Funk Zone, I think, has about changed hands in terms of ownership, and we've had some preliminary discussions with potential developers there. And anyway, the list also was provided as an attachment. In the zoning program, we did have authorization in this budget to bring on some additional hourly staff to help and enforcement, and that's getting underway right now. Danny Cotto is working with the staff, and there's going to be an effort on sign sweeps for prohibited signs throughout the city, addressing comprehensively all commercial districts. No one will be singled out, unless, of course, you have a violation, then that might make you different than someone who doesn't. But it's a comprehensive program. We have also, just recently, and this does relate to the ZIR item, which we'll talk about later, but pulling some of our enforcement staff out of enforcement to help with ZIRs. Plan checking is definitely a challenge. I noted in your report that in order to meet our performance goals of completing 65% of our initial plan checks on time, we need to pull in staff from other programs and do overtime. So that is definitely an issue. As we've shrunk our organization, there's been a hit there. I have a few slides to review with you. The hedge and fence ordinance update, that Renee Brooke is in the audience, and she's leading that effort. Again, another zoning program. Danny Cotto will be the lead senior planner for the new zoning ordinance, starting up in 2014. So on the hedges, this ordinance was initially discussed here at a joint meeting in April last year, and we had direction from the council as well, to address some of the challenges we have with application of the ordinance. So we started back with just what's the intent, privacy, safety, views, neighborhood compatibility, solar considerations. We had some really good initial discussions, so we are moving forward in adopting an ordinance that is more reflective of reality and more flexible. So the approach has been to look at exceptions. Their examples are guardrails, decorative elements. Topography is certainly a consideration. At the ordinance, or at the council meeting, there was good discussion with the traffic engineer, and I think we're going to be clear on how to deal with safety around driveways and corners, and have much more clear template and options that'll be site-specific. We are also looking to include in the ordinance administrative authority, again, with the traffic engineer, as well as with the planning staff, in order to make some determinations. That will be based on new definitions as well, giving a little more clarity to the program, and describing different situations will be helpful. So the ordinance has been to the ordinance committee, as well as the Neighborhood Advisory Council. Coming up in just a few weeks is a meeting with the Single Family Design Board. Renee has just completed a working paper that we'll actually be distributing to all of you later this week or early next week, is the, in preparation for the Single Family Design Discussion, but we'll send it to the Planning Commission and City Council as well. And then, we'll be working more closely with the city attorney's office to actually draft an ordinance. So a ordinance hearing with recommendation can be scheduled at the Planning Commission before the end of the year. We'd also like to get back to the ordinance committee before the end of the year as well, but it will be sometime early next year before we return to the city council. That's our schedule, as it is now. So the new zoning ordinance, what we're doing right now, I'm calling a soft start, because the staff, the idea of a new zoning ordinance, I mean, it comes up every day, because we're working with the current one every day. And so, and we also see communities across the state and nation that are looking to simplify, update ordinances. So we're in a research mode, in terms of gathering lists of issues that we have with our current ordinance, as well as what other communities are doing. We are just now beginning a recruitment process for the one added project planner for this project, and we'll be drafting requests for proposals to see what consultant availability is out there that we think will meet our needs. So the project actually is funded to start in January, and at that time, for the first couple of months early next year, what staff envisions is preparing for an initial Planning Commission meeting, a workshop discussion on, again, what would the scope of the update be? What would the basic approach be in terms of balancing allowances? You know, what's permitted? What's prohibited? How is it administered? What sections are we not updating? What sections are we updating and kind of getting down into some details? The city attorney's department is really critical as well, and as you all know, Mr. Wiley is leaving the city, so we expect and hope that early next year, we'll be engaged in discussion with Scott Vincent, who's the attorney to the Planning Division, and a new city attorney. There is some funding included in the CIP to support the city attorney's role, which is really big in a zoning ordinance. So then, we're thinking at the next six-month meeting, more or less next year, here with the council and Planning Commission, that we'd be checking in and about ready to release the actual request for proposal for the scope of the new zoning ordinance. So the next topic for discussion is ZIRs, but I'm going to save the staff presentation for that until after you've had discussion on the other topics. So the idea was...
I think the idea was to go back to AUD and have questions and comments about that. Before we do that, I did not call for general public comment. I didn't have any speaker slips, but I want to make sure that if they're... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so come on, why don't we just take care of that right now? Apologize, you had to wait for that. And then we'll get into the AUD discussion. These are for items not on the agenda. That's right. So for any public comment not on today's agenda, you're welcome to... If you can hand, if you can hand those over, I'll take them from here, and so I can, and then go over to the podium? Great, okay. Usually, you hand them to the clerk, and the clerk will hand them to me, but that's fine for now. So for general, the clerk is right here, Deborah, right over here. So we'll have Trevor Martinson, and then Arthur Posh, and actually, Mr. Posh, you're with the average unit size density piece, so we'll call you when we get to the public comment section about that. So Trevor Martinson, if you'd like to speak now? And I know you don't have a timer, but I'll keep, we'll ask you to keep it to two minutes, and I have a stopwatch here, and I can let you know.
Do you get any prizes by your wonders?
You get a great gratitude of thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members planning. I'm here just because of the odd, and you've heard me before, I'm very concerned that the odd will comply with project compatibility analysis.
Are you talking about the average unit density?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm sorry, you had public comment on here. I'm going to hold off until we get to the public comment section on average unit density.
Well, that's, we misunderstood.
That's okay.
Okay, so I get all my two minutes back?
You get all your two minutes back.
All right, thank you very much.
So just want to be clear, this is general public comment for items not on today's agenda. Is there anyone here for that? Okay, so I'm going to close, is that for this? No, AUD. Okay. I'm closing general public comment. Okay, so sorry for that confusion, but I wanted to make sure we had that. And now, we'll move it to the council and the commission, if there's any questions at this point, before we bring it to AUD public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Betty, the way you described the referral process, as you'd see it, that would be a staff recommendation to either the HLC or the ABR? And what would then happen, if anything, if those, either of those two bodies declined, couldn't come to an agreement to refer, to accept your recommendation and refer it to PC?
What I envision is, staff has a recommendation. One would be, we think this project should be referred for these reasons, and the review body agrees, and it gets referred. We could have a recommendation that it be referred, but then, at that meeting, the review body works through the issues and decides not to refer it. The ordinance is an action of either the ABR or HLC. So just like in any matter, the body could decide to go with the staff recommendation or not. So all of the above would be possible.
Yep, Mr. Schwartz, and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. Considering staff recommendations, I don't know if now's the time, but at some point, I'd appreciate Mr. Wiley advising us on whether or not, both in spirit and in the letter of the charter, the Planning Commission has an obligation in terms of rendering decisions that are compliant with the general plan, the sustainability framework, and also rendering land use discussions or guidance, as opposed to the purviews of ABR and HLC. So could you help us with that, Mr. Wiley?
Probably appropriate to respond now. The charter is very clear that the Planning Commission should advise the city council with respect to any general plan amendments, any general plan of adoption, but that's really not what we're talking about here. Other than that, specific provision in the charter that's fairly unequivocal, the Planning Commission's role is, as the charter describes it, is advisory and subject to council ordinance. So in terms of, you know, consistency with the charter, if the council determines, for example, in this case, that they want an ordinance to pursue what the planning staff has been recommending on the AUD, I think there's no issue there. But let me make sure, your question is about land use compatibility, specifically general plan compatibility, and that question being reviewed, say, by the ABR or the HLC, is that correct?
Yes, in essence.
I think my reaction to that is, it depends on the context. I mean, it's very context-dependent. We would be, I assume, referring something to the HLC, or the HLC would be looking at HLC issues on a project before them, and, you know, historic preservation issues, consistency with EPV guidelines. So, and that's all, of course, all part of the general plan. And so when they're looking at an AUD project, they would be looking at their particular HLC issues, historic preservation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, let me expand it by asking. So if we need to determine that a project is also consistent with the general plan pertaining to the sustainability framework and the principles that we all set forth and the council approved, and they pertain to land use issues, and I'll talk later about some current projects that I'll bring in as examples, within the scope of the purview, both by charter and by AUD ordinance, at some point, I think, we're going to need to discuss how the ABR and HLC could do that, when it begs the question of whether or not it's within their purview to do that, vis-à-vis the Planning Commission. So again, if not now, before public comment, perhaps we could flesh that out?
Respond by saying, I do believe it's in their purview to look at general plan consistency, and maybe you wouldn't call that land use consistency, but their purview, as I say, HLC, historic preservation issues, consistency with adjacency to a landmark or a structure of merit.
Right, I'm clear about that.
But I actually, I hear you referring not so much to the AUD as to the ordinance we did, I don't know, eight or nine years ago, with certain findings, although...
Right there, compatibility.
Oh, yeah, here we go. Project compatibility analysis, what year was that about? Anyway, I hear you referring to the project compatibility analysis. And I don't know, my reaction is, that works. It is written in such a way that it allows those design review boards to get to your, the questions they're supposed to be getting to. And finally, and I'm not, not everyone sees it this way, but I've always advised the planning staff that design review boards are design review boards, and they do not issue discretionary approvals. They issue design approvals. And that can be a pretty substantial thing at times, but by and large, they're supposed to be looking at the design, yet size, bulk, and scale is quite a big issue for them to look at. And if they say the size, bulk, and scale of this project is much too much for us, or is incompatible with its neighborhood or with its neighbors, that's a big thing. But by and large, let's just say, the ABR is not supposed to be saying, no, you can't build your project. It's supposed to be saying, we want this in terms of the roof, we want this in terms of the exterior, and we want this reduced because of the size, bulk, and scale, for example.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll pick this up later on during comments.
Did you want to add anything, Ms. Swes, or... Okay, go around to Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Betty, would you expand a little bit on your staff recommendation on the process steps, page 404? Six bullet down says, the ABR or HLC reviews the staff report, and if needed, towards the project. Who decides the need? Is this what you were referring to, that the staff would make this determination and recommend it to the design board, and then the design board would vote and determine if it goes to the PC? The need, in other words?
Yes.
Need sounds like, you know, it really has to happen, but you're saying that it's sort of a discretionary decision on the part of the design board?
That's correct. What I mean in that bullet is that we would prepare a report for the ABR or HLC, and our recommendation as to the need or reason for a referral to the Planning Commission. So the language says, if needed, but I'm expanding to say, if we believe and recommend that these reasons exist for the board to refer it to the Planning Commission for comments.
Okay, so, okay, I think we understand that. And it goes on to say, for comment, and comment doesn't sound like we're actually doing very much, you know? And you go on in the next bullet and say, no action is taken by the PC, their direction to the ABR and HLC. Now, direction and comment are two different things. If we review something and just comment, it's, oh, by the way, this is the PC's comment, but if it's direction that they're supposed to act upon, that's a little different context. So would you talk about that dichotomy?
I can give you my comment on it. That's a topic for your discussion. Our view of it is that we were trying to explain that we would like the Planning Commission discussion and comment to be focused, clear, a majority, direction, rather than like what happens at a concept review. So this is what we were trying to describe. But I do think that it really would be back at the ABR or HLC for that body to decide how they respond to your direction and comment. So the Planning Commission would not dictate a particular action on the part of the applicant or the design review board. That would still be up to them to make the decision regarding the project. So we did use the word direction, I think, in an effort to describe that it's not a range of commenting, that it's a majority direction, but it's not an authoritative direction. It's where staff was envisioning this.
So more of an agreed-upon comment from the PC than, rather than a direction? Because if it's a direction, then they would have to follow it. And we're not proposing that that's the case.
Yeah.
Like a CUP or a condition of approval, something like that, that we vote on, then that has to be followed. But if we're just making our input, then it's not something that has to be followed.
That's correct.
That's how you envision it?
Right, which I think some of this comes up now, again, when projects are being reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the city council now. The Planning Commission has this section in your conditions of approval. There's always a section in the conditions that is Planning Commission direction to ABR or HLC. And this issue has come up before there, too. How clear do we need to be to the board as to what, we really want to see this, or we're, you know, leaving these issues to that board to consider?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe just as an example, a couple items we spoke about, say compatibility, not necessarily to landmarks or historical resources, but just say the neighborhood in general. And someone does come in with a project, a rental project, where they propose a three-story building that's allowed within the approved setbacks, approved parking, but a design board feels that it's not in scale with what currently exists, even though it currently exists, would have the opportunity under the same zoning and the same AUD to produce a similar product. Now, we're doing a test, which means we're going to evaluate that particular project on whether it would possibly, it's in the test area, if it's a high-density or an overlay project. We're going to be evaluating it on whether, on some basis, we haven't determined yet, whether it's successful, both from a design standpoint, and is it achieving what we desire for sustainability and occupancy by a broad range of householders? Is that an example of something where either it would come back to us to try to reach some type of consensus that, in order to achieve this project, maybe you can't cut it back to two stories or something like that? Or do we make a determination, this should not go in the 250-unit test because it was not able to be built to the standards that were otherwise allowed for the AUD?
That was a pretty extensive question.
We're trying to keep it to questions at this point.
I'll answer the last part first, which is whether or not a project is included in the test or not, if it's somehow modified at the design review. Again, if it's a high-density project or an overlay project, it is part of something that we're very specifically going to track and see what happened. We'll see what happened in the review process. So that last part of your question about, well, if something happens at design review, does that make it not part of the test or not? I would say it is part of the test if it is a project that is being evaluated under the AUD for high-density or overlay. So that was that last part of your question?
Yeah.
Okay. As far as project, the staff recommendation and what the board decides whether or not to refer it to Planning Commission for comment, I think staff is going to, as we explained in the staff report, if the design review board direction seems such that the intents of the AUD might, an opportunity to meet the intents of the AUD for increased rental housing is really being lost to a large degree, then staff is going to be inclined to say, we think that this should be referred for comment. I think if we had this process in place, we, you know, we probably would have made that comment on the People Self-Help project. That's clearly a community benefit housing project. The loss of the third story of living space is a pretty significant change in the project, and the community is really concerned about the parking in that area. Those would all be really good reasons to recommend a referral to the Planning Commission. But at the same time, that, you know, time is of the essence. There's grant funding and cycles of review, and again, trying to balance the review. The applicant seemed, well, I don't want to go into that project, but anyway, back to your question being, how will we decide if it should be referred to or not? I think there are projects and locations now, prior to AUD, again, where the design review process modifies the project, results in fewer units, results in a greater setback. In order for the ABR or HLC to make those compatibility findings for the last nine or however many years, even before, the design review process has shaped the projects, either by reducing the height, reducing or increasing a setback, changing the architectural style, that does affect the project overall in terms of the number of units and the amount of parking that can fit on a site. So the design review process, I believe, already does that to a certain degree, and I don't think that that will change as a result of the AUD. And it'll be a sense of, is the change that's happening appropriate? You know, not every site in the city that has the potential under AUD will be built out to the maximum development potential. I don't think that's the intent of the program. So there are going to be some sites that have corners, slope, trees, historic structures next door. There's going to be a lot of reasons why some sites might not build out to the full potential, and if that's identified at the design review and we think there's a good discussion going on, staff is going to recommend that the project stay at the design review. If we think there's an opportunity being missed or a broader Planning Commission input would be helpful, then we'll recommend that it be referred to the PC.
Okay, questions going around? Actually, I'm going to keep going, I'll go around, because I've been telling Mr. White he can speak, so go right ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. MEA, you mentioned that that's in process, and I think that's an area where, at least my experience on PC, was that that was not a strong player. It was not a piece of our conversation that was as strong as, for example, I remember experiencing it at the county. And that, and so that's an area where it also is a strong underpinning for discretionary decisions. And I'm wondering how you see that going? You said it's in process now. Is your intent, is your thought that this would become a more robust document than it is now? And also, where is it in process?
The Master Environmental Assessment, MEA, has had, well, it originally was drafted in 1979 as one document, but over time, there have been various addendums to it. And we're trying to, this has been going on now for at least the last three years or so, the current effort, but the effort to update the MEA has been going on probably closer to 20 years.
Like Mission Creek?
Yeah, so it's been updated with various memos and different internal procedures. Because what the Master Environmental Assessment basically is, is a guide to making environmental determinations. So if the project normally qualifies for a categorical exemption, the city staff still consults the MEA to make sure that there aren't any site-specific issues that would bump it out of a categorical exemption. If the project requires an initial study, the staff uses the MEA to support the analysis in an initial study. If we're doing an EIR, the staff uses the MEA to help explain, you know, how to analyze issues and what the thresholds are. And so the MEA is a multipurpose document for all levels of environmental review, and it is, been updated substantially related to historic and archaeological resources. That part of the MEA has really been working every day, and the board and commissions and the staff, the Planning Commission, I think, when we say MEA, sometimes they think only of that section because it's used so much. The staff has had a couple of discussions with the Planning Commission, so maybe some of the Planning Commissioners who've been on those discussions might also want to weigh in. Again, one of the objectives of that is to reduce all the boilerplate language that gets repeated in all the impact sections of the initial study. And that's been slowly started, I think you've already started to seize the Planning Commission some of that happening. What we've got on our plate right now, we feel that we'd like to do very soon, is update the traffic section. Because, again, the findings of the EIR with regard to cumulative impacts, the use of the model, and the new limitation on project-specific impacts, we would just like to see that all documented as part of our MEA sooner rather than later. So that section is being moved to the front. But I could go on and on. I don't know how much interest there is in the whole group for this.
Well, Madam Mayor, I mean, what I'm trying to get at is, what's the end? I mean, I'm imagining where this is intended to go is, have a document that people can, it's like the zoning ordinance, where it's something that we can get our head around, rather than being patchwork of bits and pieces here and there. Let's get something that's a clear, upfront document that then becomes the foundation. Is that where you're headed, and when would you get there?
Yes, that's where we're headed. And we're kind of dividing it into pieces. We've already got there in terms of a screening table for exemptions. So again, it's in pieces. That part has been done. So some of the MEA update environmental procedures part is done. I don't have a schedule. One of the main reasons why we don't get there is, there's always projects and other special things. So I really want Barbara Shelton to wrap up the air quality setback. That's taking away, we needed to have her review the safety element, you could imagine. I mean, input of the EA, and that was very important. So it keeps getting extended, and I think it's something, to some degree, we'll always be working on. I don't know when the endpoint will be.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that.
In all honesty, I've tried many times, and I just, I don't see it.
All right. Well, it certainly, I mean, I can appreciate that resources are scarce and that these other things come in and dilute the focus. My second question is, could you give us a short summary of the comparing a project that goes to Planning Commission and doesn't go? Let's take the same project, and it's going to, is it go to Planning Commission, or doesn't it, or does it go through this hybrid process that you're talking about? I think that comparison in terms of cost and time, if you can give a short summary on that, that might help us in our review.
Sure, I can do that. So let's take a 10-unit condominium project. Those go to Planning Commission. So the first thing that 10-unit condo would do in the East Side Cottage Hospital, you know, some R3 site in the city, they would, they're required to have a PRT, Pre-Application Review Team meeting, is required for all subdivisions. So that's a staff review that typically takes about six weeks or so from the time that someone applies, depending on how many other applications we have when we get the PRT scheduled. PRT is a coordinated land development team. Fire department gets it, building gets it, various people in Public Works get. We consult with parks sometimes. So anyway, there's a site visit, there's a meeting, there's letters, and that process could easily take six weeks. Those projects also go to the design review board for concept review. So the first phase of a project that's going to the Planning Commission is design review concept. That could take one meeting, it could take three meetings. We usually don't want it to go really beyond three meetings because that, there's something wrong. Why are we spending so much time at concept review? That design review concept, again, depending on the applicant's design team, can happen boom, 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 in a matter of two months. Sometimes the applicant may be rethinking all kinds of things. So PC projects at concept review could take four months. Then you go and you apply. We have something called DART, Development Application Review Team. Most applications for Planning Commission are not deemed complete in their first 30-day review. They require subsequent DARTs. That process usually takes, again, could be about six months to complete two DARTs. It could be three years to complete two DARTs. A lot of the review time is not in city review, it's what the applicant does. Then you prepare environmental review and staff reports. Planning Commission, when I lay this out for an applicant, I describe all the steps, the pre-application and concept, the DART reviews, the environmental review, the staff report, the noticing, preparing for the PC meeting. It almost always starts to add up close to a year. And then when we engage with them, and what are the issues that are being examined, it can be much longer than a year. Okay, 10-unit apartment building goes to ABR, does not require Planning Commission. It might require a modification, and that's a process that, then you have design review and modification. Whereas at Planning Commission, if you have a modification, it's all wrapped into the one application. Anyway, design review and modifications easily take half the amount of time, as a quick answer. And what we think we can do is, we believe we can embed this process of a coordinated review one time, not multiple DARTs, but one coordinated review early in the process. We think that we could add this in with maybe adding, I haven't worked it all out, the staff is anxious to figure this out for us, but I think we can add it in with probably about a month to, added to the process. You know, our intent would be, as we've laid it out here, to be as quickly as possible, that at the second conceptual review, the design review board decides if they want to send it to PC or not. They may decide not to do it at that second meeting. They might want a third meeting before they decide. But we would like it to go to the Planning Commission at the next available meeting, so we all don't have to prepare a whole new, brand-new report. We're suggesting that the design review board, ABR, HLC, members come to the PC meeting, so we don't write a second report that requires three more months. Again, one of the objectives being that we're incentivizing rental housing. Adding six months to a process to go to Planning Commission, we think, is not clearly incentivizing, yet Planning Commission adds value. And so that's been the struggle. So does that answer your question?
It does. A piece of it, how about cost?
Oh, cost. The fee resolution for the coordinated review project PRT, that would be adding somewhere around, I don't know, about $2,000 for that process. Whereas when you go to the Planning Commission, you pay that $2,000, plus you pay, again, in the 10-unit condo, it's probably $6,000 or so for the PC. So you don't pay the $6,000, but you would be paying the pre-application, is what we're thinking.
Okay, questions? Ms. Lodge, then Ms. Pujo, and then Mr. House, and then Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are new staff activities involved here, providing staff reports on projects that go to ABR and HLC. And you mentioned one case needing to transfer employees from doing one task to doing another in order to carry it out. Are you anticipating doing this with the same staff?
Yes, the idea right now for this process is that the case planners and the development review group would be supporting the design review boards. This topic's on the table for discussion. If the council and the Planning Commission thinks that some of these projects must go to the Planning Commission, those same staff would be doing this work, and it would take them more time. But that is what we're thinking, is that the primary staff would be the case planners. However, in the event that it's a fairly minor project, we don't really see a need to refer it to the Planning Commission, and it's kind of evident early on. We do think that the planning technicians that support ABR or HLC would be able to handle some of the projects. And again, we put out there that this would occur for projects of 10 units or more. Trying to decide that size threshold is, again, up for discussion. That would be the size, three stories or greater, or 10 units or more was where we thought these thought these memos and things would come in for the projects.
Repeat that, please.
Projects of 10 units or more, or three stories, or three or four stories. And that's where, that's where the coordinated review would happen, in the memo to the board for those projects.
I was not-
And we struggled with trying to pick that number, so we're open to have you all discuss.
I guess I wasn't just referring to projects which might be referred to the Planning Commission. All projects, sequoet determinations need to be made now. And this is something that hasn't been done before, the review committees and the Design Review Boards. And sometimes, if there are going to be findings, that might- Oh, okay, okay. Is this better? Okay, sorry. If the, if findings are going to be made and so on, this is, this is an additional work for the Design Review Board, but it's also additional work for staff. And my question is really, can this all be done with, do you anticipate it can be done with existing staff? The additional workload.
Right now, I have a little bit different point of view in terms of what environmental review happens to support the Design Review Boards. That already is happening, and that we've prepared a new form and that technically we want, at that meeting, a finding to be made is really, I don't see that as a lot more staff work, and I see it as an education piece that needs to occur with the Design Review Boards. But I don't, I don't think that is what's going to add time. However, this process, I do think, will add workload to the staff, and, in a more substantial way than the minor change to the environmental review. And, right now, as I reported, we're working on a number of projects that have been in the process for some time, and we do see some new projects coming down the line. But I think we're going to be seeing more rental housing projects than we will necessarily condominium, I mean, we will do the best we can with the staff we have, and I think we can do a pretty good job as the development activity is still less than it has been historically. However, we have a little bit less staff than we have historically, and the level of staffing in zoning isn't what it should be, and therefore, we have been using the Development Review Case Planners to help in zoning. And this is the point that Commissioner Lodge made. If you've been having them help in zoning, and now they're going to be helping here, what's going to happen? And it is a constrained staff resource for all of our programs. The last item that we'll be talking about today also involves a shift of staffing.
And I want to note the time, and we, you know, we have till noon, I believe, and we have a lot more to cover, so, Ms. Pujo.
Thank you. I have two clarification questions, and my other kind of questions/comments would be better addressed after public comment, when we're in the discussion. So my two clarification questions are related to the process steps, the bullet items, but I don't see here are any bullets that specifically address the SEQA process and the appeal process. So could you just very briefly go over what that would be? I know it would be different for different types of projects, and for sake of this question, perhaps, address the straightforward projects that don't automatically come to the Planning Commission because they're condominiums, et cetera, and, and don't require modifications and other, you know, discretionary features that are already part of our process.
The, the way a project works when it goes to the ABR now is, staff reviews the SEQA guidelines for categorical exemptions. And we have a really good program to use the infill categorical exemption. And so, the infill categorical exemption has various things that you have to confirm, that there aren't any noise impacts, there, you know, aren't any certain impacts. And the way we have done that is, we do use our master environmental assessment, as Council Member White was asking. So, for projects that go to ABR or HLC currently to build 10 new apartments, the staff does a certain level of environmental review to confirm that the project is categorically exempt. The new process is, these projects would probably still be infill categorical exemptions. The newness of it is that we prepared an EIR for Plan Santa Barbara based on a traffic model that had cumulative impacts identified. So there are various sections in the SEQA guidelines that allow for a project to still be categorically exempt while recognizing that your program EIR had cumulative, long-term city-wide impacts. So the new process, and we've worked this out with the city attorney, is a proper citation of one section of SEQA. So, it's a lot of, are you really enjoying this? This is, you know, this is something that needs to happen, but it is not per se a huge change. But until you understand it and decide, oh, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and really get this, it sounds worse than it is, in my opinion. It hasn't been easy to get here, I'll give you that. We've really had to work on this, but it doesn't change anything. Now, on the appeal process, decisions made by the ABR are appealed to council. Decisions made by HLC that are appealed, are appealed to city council. Planning Commission has never been in the appeal loop of these design boards, although sometimes people think that they are, that they are not. And our staff recommendation is, let's not add this separate PC appeal, because for projects that do have both Planning Commission and ABR, we've had issues where, which, you know, should we be bringing up a PC appeal? And then because the project's controversial, it'll go back to the Design Review Board and they'll approve it, and that's a second appeal. So sometimes when we anticipate that, we hold off on one appeal and try to schedule them together, and all of that. So, staff is recommending for that reason, as well as trying not to overly complicate the process and to keep it streamlined, to have the PC make comments only and not an appealable action.
Okay, thank you.
It's great. A bunch of my things have been resolved as we go along here. So, the standard procedure, again, roles seem very important here. The, the role of ABR and HLC, which has to do tremendously with aesthetics and its historic resources, is not the same as Planning Commission. Planning Commission's role has to do with land use.
Mr. House, can you keep it to the question? I really want to acknowledge the time.
Sure, I understand.
We have an hour and 10 minutes and a lot to cover in public comment.
This role thing is really important, and I, maybe if we're not going to talk about it right this minute, we need to really have it addressed. Staff resource is going to be more boosted, if you will, for HLC and for ABR. Also, to assist them in knowing what their purview is, might be critically important. So maybe those are things you could address as we move forward. Staffing, I'm hearing this come up, for me, it's big, and it's going to come up in the ZI-
Mr. House, what is your question? You're commenting. So if you can ask a specific, we'll get to comments after public comment, but if you have a specific question, now's the time for that.
In the AUD program, are rentals an allowed use in commercial zones, certain commercial zones?
Presently, rental is an allowed use in, in all residential and most all commercial zones. The only ones are the M1 and the OM1 where rental's not allowed.
And going to Mr. Campanella's question that he asked earlier, is, on a property in a, that's a C2 zone functions, and somebody wanted it developed to its close-to fullest potential, you know, a lot line to lot line, what would be the difference between a rental proposal coming with the same, say, scale of design? What would be a distinction in terms of process between the two?
The, a project that's all rental does not go to the Planning Commission. And if the project is a condominium over five units, it goes to the Planning Commission.
And if it's a strictly commercial building?
If it's a commercial building, and the additional new square footage is less than 3,000 square feet, it's at the Design Review Board. If the commercial building involves an addition of more than 3,000 square feet, it goes to the Planning Commission.
Okay, very good. And then, I think that's it, those are the most important things.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess to kind of phrase this as a question, haven't we kind of set ourselves up for the dilemma we're facing right now? Essentially, the decisions that are being made by HLC and ABR, having been on ABR for a number of years, are now being appealed on the topics for which we couldn't speak to. We couldn't speak to traffic and circulation and density and all of those items. So, we've directed the AUD quote-unquote "experiment," which is never going to pass a compatibility test, otherwise, it's an experiment. It's not the same as its neighbors. So, the first ones in are getting hammered, they're getting appealed, it's not a short process. We created our own obstacle, and everything's going to go to city council. If the idea is efficiency, then maybe we need to rethink how these are processed, and why should it really make a big difference whether it's a condominium or rental? It's a, it's a theoretical lot line of ownership interior to a unit. The impact of the neighbors and the community are still the same, whether it's rental or condominium. PC kind of helped craft with staff and forwarded to city council all the AUD ordinance, and yet we're totally left out of the loop in terms of its implementation. I think the, the AUD is being so diluted, it's lost its intent. So, I think that's where the real dilemma lies. So hopefully, we can-
And is that a question? It sounds like a real great-
It was a question, yes. Haven't we set up our own dilemma?
Well, that's-
That was the question.
I don't know if that's a yes or no answer for Ms. Weiss, but-
Well, well-
I'm going to move this to public comment.
Yeah, good.
I'm going to move this to public comment, and we'll start with Trevor Martinson again, and go to Arthur Posh. I do have a timer here. When two minutes are up, you will, you will hear that, okay? So, you know, you know your time is up, okay? So, off you go, Mr.-
Again, regarding the AUD, I've enjoyed this commentary, because I do agree that a lot of these projects are going to end up going through all the way to the top because of the issues. And one that I find hard, and project compatibility analysis is so important, and I appreciate the comments from staff, that they are going to look into these things and make sure the rules and regulations are followed. That's important. But what I can understand, and this is why I'm, I'm here, is that here we have the Haley Street as the most high-rise, dense development, and yet, we all know the old word salsa wait is, go if you are able or possible. These are the swamps, this is El Estero, and I see nothing but problems occurring now with all of the projects that are going to be proposed on the Haley Corridor. It's, I mean, there's just so much contamination. I mean, a perfect example is the Artisan Court, developed by the Redevelopment Agency. I mean, you literally cannot plant anything there, you cannot eat any vegetables, anything. Contaminated soil, all of the 1925 earthquake debris is down there. I mean, it's very important, I think, that project compatibility analysis be really looked at, and I mean, not just from the SEQA standpoint. We have to be very careful. So thank you for allowing me that comment.
Thank you. Arthur Posh will be followed by Robert Burke, and of course, if anyone from, Mr. Posh, if you could come to the podium. But also, I want to invite HLC and ABR members, if you wanted to speak too, to make sure you do so.
Would you like to talk to the speaker?
No, why don't you, why don't you go after Robert Burke, okay? And I didn't, and then, is anyone from, oh, they're right in front of me, from HLC. Mr. Posh?
I don't know by how you're, how you do your stuff, I'm trying to learn.
Okay. If you, please just go to the podium, and you have two minutes, and I see you have something to give to us.
I have two pages right there, or two papers, and one is a handout for that of average density stuff, and it has all the information on it. And then, on the 23rd day of July, there is a 2820040 there, and it's that of the one that's marked, can you see it? Madam, yes, the second item B. Only government can that of, I think, do. Why don't you reevaluate stuff as that of stuff comes up, rather than build 250 units in an area and then think you have to evaluate it? Maybe I'm not reading that right. And then, the last, that B section, I saw nothing in any of that of the writings, and all of a sudden, that was shoved in to my, that's my opinion. And it says, I'm not going to count some of them. And you could have up to 1,000, maybe more, doesn't even know which. Can somebody give me an answer? Please.
This is public comment, you can make your comments, and it comes back to us for any, so we can continue on with our comments and we can respond at that point, so.
You're not going to answer my question, is that what you're saying?
I just said, this is public comment, you can make your comments, we go through all the public comments, and then the group here can, can opine afterwards.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and you all. I have a specific comment and a general comment. My specific comment, and I'm encouraged by what I've heard about the Haley Street project, I have severe problems with it being not appropriate for that neighborhood. And I would like to, and the Architectural Review Board, I am told, is limited by what it can decide, and so I feel like we're caught in a bureaucratic quagmire as far as the community is concerned. My general comment is that I know all of you well enough that we all have different opinions about how we should do what we're doing here. But there's no doubt in my mind that each and every one of you has within your heart the well-being of the city of Santa Barbara, and I think that you are all united in that quest. And so I'm grateful for your services, and I'm honored to be here and to address you. The one concern that I have, my general comment, is that the purpose of our sitting here is to rearrange sticks and mud so that we can provide for the general welfare of the people who inhabit those buildings. But not once have I ever seen any attention paid to the moral quality of the people erecting the project or running the project. I've been on Section 8 since the mid-'90s, and my experiences have been that some of the rental owners treat their clients as valued customers, and others abuse them mentally. And so, poor people are easy targets because they are afraid to comment upon their being mistreated because they're afraid they will lose their housing, and my experience is, people get kicked out when they complain. So, my request is that we take into consideration and have part of the administrative process a challenge to the moral quality of the people either erecting the building or the people who are managing the building. If our purpose is to provide for the mental health, the spiritual well-being, and the physical well-being of our citizens, that this would be an appropriate avenue to allow for the people to comment on. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Sooting, and then William Lavoy, Lisa Plowman, and then Brian Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, commission members. I'm going to ask a question, I know you can opine about it later. My question is why? Why would we be giving this sort of review to the Design Review when really their charge is aesthetic and PC's review, or PC's charge is land use issues? We've already had one project come before us, and we tried to make, we did make the compatibility findings, that project was appealed, or has been appealed. You know, granted, PC review requires more intensive staff support and review, but I think in the long run, that comprehensive review does minimize late hits. The staff does a wonderful job when they send things off to PC to look at everything. I recognize that an ordinance amendment is a lot of work, but it seems that that amendment right out the gate would be more efficient and not try to reshape the wheel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lavoy?
Madam Mayor, Council, Planning Commissioners, I'd like to echo what Mr. Bartlet's question was and make it a comment. In this process, this, contrary to Mr., what was Mr. Wiley advised, I'm sorry, this is a change for us, and we need training. We need to know what it's about, we need to know what our role is, we need to know what our purview is, or we are dead in the water. And it, it sets up an adversarial position between us and an applicant that doesn't need to be there. The other part of this, and probably the most important part of this, is now applicants need to be advised that, that we are somewhat like the Planning Commission used to be, and they need to pay attention to our concerns about things that aren't just about what color shutters they need to put on the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Plowman. And then, Brian Nelson will be the final speaker for this part of public comment.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission and Council, I wanted to thank everybody for giving us this opportunity to speak today. I've been very involved in the AUD program, and I think it's an important program, and we're eager to work with staff to figure out how to make sure the process is working efficiently and effectively. So, if our goal is to expedite rental projects, which I think it is, and is stated so in the general plan, there's a couple of things we have to consider, and that is timing, the cost, and making sure that adequate review is completed. So, I agree with staff that it's a bit tricky, the way it's operating right now, and it hasn't been fully resolved. And I'm sure the people that I worked with on the AUD program will be very involved in this, but there's a couple of things I wanted to add to the discussion. I think a PRT will be of value for projects that are going through the process, because it's a little bit disjointed right now. But I think, as a way to expedite this review process, maybe we could designate a specific team that had specific players that always participated in this, on just rental projects, so that they would be called together rather quickly and move through the process in a short period of time. Maybe it's three weeks or something like that, so the projects could move along. I think... I'm not sure about the PC referral yet, how much delay that would create, what kind of confusion that may create, or challenges between the communication between the PC and the design review boards, because I've seen that happen on other projects. But I think creating some kind of criteria, so that an applicant gets an understanding of what potentially might go to the planning commission, because it would be like playing Russian roulette. Every time you came in, you weren't sure whether or not you were going to get referred, depending on what issues came up. And then, somehow expediting that step of getting to the planning commission really quickly. But we'll definitely stay involved and be eager to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Madam Mayor, thank you for this few moments. I just have four points. One is, I have three projects that are coming in through the AUD program right now. One, I just... There's only eight copies there, but that's one of the projects. And if you review that project, and I've spoken with the Planning Commission, City Council about these projects already, if you review that project, everything that Ms. Plowman just said, and the ABR has talked about, is the dilemma. And that is, we bring in a project that meets all the criteria of AUD, all the setbacks, all the... Everything, parking, everything, open space. And we get to ABR and bulk mass and scale compatibility. We're the first one on the block. And how can you create something this big, when everything else next door is this big, but eventually, we'll get that big? And I think the PRT idea is great, because then, we know all the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, and we're not asking for mods, or if we are. But if it meets all those criteria, then staff can direct ABR that it will be compatible. I don't know how else to do it. So, I think that is a good suggestion, and that it would be done timely. Obviously, you're crunched with staff, but to be done in a timely manner, because it's costing my clients a lot of money to go through this process. And if we don't have some specifics that we can talk to ABR or HLC, then we walk in the door with this... My concern right now is, we walk in the door with one of these new projects, and we have to go two or three times to ABR, and we have to make it smaller before we can get to planning commission to say, "We still want it where we started." Those are my comments.
Okay. That concludes public comment on this item. Thank you all for being concise. I think the question earlier to the handout I was given, the issue was about why is there an exclusion of low and very low housing units? Why is that excluded from the 250-unit program limit? And that was part, as I remember, with the general plan update process, and the whole incentive was dealing with market rate non-subsidized rental units. And unless there's something else I'm missing, Ms. Weiss, but that was the thought process behind that exclusion. So, I think that should answer that question. Okay. To the commission and council for some direction on this issue, and if we can, I'd like to keep it to 15 minutes, so we can get through everything else on the agenda. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Mr. Bartlet kind of nailed it on the head. It's been my concern all along, and the feedback I've gotten from the public thus far, as people try to get their arms around this new program and understand it, is along all these considerations, what we don't have is a greater community input on traffic and circulation and parking. And that's really been the linchpin, in terms of people's fears. And I also would like to... Also, consideration for Ms. Plowman's comment about a template, perhaps even this... I don't know if there's a specialist that could handle these particular projects, almost like an ombudsman for an expediting... In terms of expediting this process, somebody who had some level of expertise, I don't know if that's would be Mr. Lamone, or something along those lines, that could really drive the bus when it came to these projects and have clarity for the clients of the would-be expedition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I favor more projects going to planning commission on a sort of more traditional path. And I could see either size of building or FAR as being two tools for saying, if a building is of a certain size, it goes to PC, or if it hits a certain FAR, it goes to PC, as ways... I just feel like that's a clean route to planning commission is a better way to go. I think that the appeal process is one that's going to... Could chew us up on these projects, where if a project is going from ABR to council and missing PC, I'm worried about that. Whereas, I think if we can send something through that's of scale, that it get as... And we've heard that this is all behind, underneath many people's concerns. I just think those are two places we could look for establishing thresholds for a PC review. And then, all these expedite, these tools, these ideas about making the process more efficient, we need to do that anyway. And then, staffing, as we get more development, we're going to need more staff. That's just... Or another tool for review, and we've talked about contract plan check as one safety valve for high-volume times.
Mr. Francisco and Mr. Hotchkiss?
So, I've talked with people on the design review boards about this. And though certainly, they're intelligent people, and they can handle doing things that the planning commission has traditionally done, I don't think it makes sense. And when you look at some of the projects that are coming through, for instance, 1330 Chapala, the project that's being appealed, the one on the north side of the Arlington, the traffic and the parking issues there are serious. That should have gone to the planning commission, and it didn't. And so, it's being appealed to us. Now, hopefully, Marge Cafarelli was at the DO meeting the other day, and she said she's working with the Piker Group to come to some sort of solution, and I hope they do. That would be great. But it seems absolutely clear to me that a project of that size and that impact should have gone to the planning commission. It should not just have gone to the HLC. So, I think that we need to pick a number, a number of units, more than five, more than 10. I'm not sure what, but certainly 32. That should have gone to the planning commission. So, and I agree with Bendy. Anything that we can do within community development to expedite the process for all projects, we should be doing. But we're setting ourselves up for failure if we don't insist that large projects go through the PC.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Weiss, this is a strange question, but have you discussed this with developers? Or do you feel it's a little bit like asking the fox in with the chickens?
We really haven't discussed... This is a new topic. This is the first time... Other than individual conversations that have been happening for about the last month or so, the development community was very much aware and involved in the drafting of the AUD, as well as the policy documents in, you know, policies in the general plan that directed the AUD. And they... We have not engaged in discussion with them, but again, what they have heard so far and were expecting was that rental projects would not be going to the planning commission. That has been explained as the existing review process for rental development for decades. So, people like Brian Nelson, this is the first time that he's having the opportunity to hear about the possibility of a change in the review process officially.
Right.
Again, there's been some discussion because of the People Self-Help Project and the Arlington Village Project.
Right. But with the advent, or the potential advent of big projects like Chapala we're talking about, seems to me the whole criteria's changed, because I hear all over the place what's going on, and you all never talked about it.
But I do want to note that had the council not adopted the AUD program...
Right.
Both of those projects could have come in and been approved in the fashion that they were.
Right. So, we're trying to improve things.
Okay.
And you mentioned a criteria of 10 units, or I can't remember what the other one was. But at least you picked a criteria. Clearly, from everybody's point of view, the more we can put criteria down, so is Mr. White is saying, people know what the game is, rather than coming in and just saying, "Oh, well, that's not really the end zone. They're going to move that 10 yards this way." It's easy for us to say that. I'm sure you've been working on that, but simplifying and... What was the other word to use? Expediting are what you want and what you're after, and I think everybody here would like to see throughout the room. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Crampanella, we're just going around the room.
Okay. Thank you. I'm trying to go forward a little bit to evaluating the test. We're not talking about an ongoing policy review. We're talking about a 250-unit test to see if there is an evaluation, both from a design standpoint and who the units are serving, which means economics in the mind of the developer and his lender, whether we're being successful or not. We have to make that evaluation. There's a variety of different projects and sizes that could come in during that test period. It could be a small parcel, a wider parcel, an owned parcel, unowned, commercial, residential. So, there's going to be a number of different things that we will see in trying to evaluate whether this makes sense or not. And I think the more it goes beyond planning commission, I think the less we're going to be able to properly evaluate whether this worked. Otherwise, planning commission is going to have to pay attention to every review meeting to see why or why not something may have worked. So, I would recommend some type of, either an FAR, because then you'll consider the size of sites as a cutoff that would go to planning commission. I agree with that. Secondly, I think from a public and developer perspective, I think the website is great. All the information is on there. I think, however, there may be some, at some point, maybe what the goals are of the program that developers and owners can see. And secondly, to compile a list of frequently asked questions as we go through the process to get on the website as well. I would suggest that, to get more information out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think planning commission is being perceived as an impediment to expediency, therefore should be left out of the process. And I don't really think that we should be considered that way, and I think we could really add value to projects, if we can come up with a process that's simple and short. And I would suggest that AUD projects have an initial meeting, that's a joint meeting with either the ABR or the HLC, and PC, and get everybody's comments and have a dialogue at the same table at the same time. Then, let the project go to ABR or HLC, whoever's territory it's in, and proceed, and let the liaison from planning commission to that particular group monitor. If it's going haywire, looking like it's going to be appealed to city council, give the liaison the authority to pull it back to PC and try and get it reined in. Otherwise, everything's going to go straight to city council, and that's not good for the applicant or for city council, and ABR's totally left out of the loop. Our goal should be to expedite and move these projects along. We're the ones that help create the incentive. Our last purpose for us is to disincentivize and lengthen the process. So, let's have a quick dialogue around the same table, so ABR and HLC can hear the entire discussion. Then, they don't lose it in interpretation when they do their review. The liaison can monitor, and we can take it from there. But let's shortcut it. I mean, that's the intent of this. We all want to have a successful experiment. Otherwise, we're really wasting our time. So, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with staff that the current process isn't working, and I want to, as a follow-on to Commissioner Bartlet's comments, mention that I think an unintended consequence of moving from a historical paradigm of sorts, pre-AUD, to where we are now, is that we perhaps didn't anticipate that some of the complex, community-impacting issues that are land use-related, which is why I asked Mr. Wiley to guide us in terms of the charter, are sort of sidestepping the planning commission. But then, those very issues, those issues that now will be coming to the council on appeal, or are raised in opposition by residents, local business owners, are having to be vetted at the level of ABR and HLC. And I've recently watched those hearings, and I think with the three projects that I'm going to mention, we have the People Self-Help Housing Project on Salsapuete. We have the Arlington Village at Sola and Chapala, and then Grace Village, the senior housing project in La Cumbra. All three of those projects have elements where I believe that had PC had an appropriate role, not bogging down time and cost efficiency, but some value-added role, I think that, one, the ABR and HLCs involved would not have to struggle, as I watched they did, with attempting to discuss and render direction on land use issues. Number one, they're outside their purview. Number two, they're simply not equipped, and it's not within their ability to do so. So, I would say, and I have talked to developers, by the way, and of course, they don't want their projects to be lengthened in time. However, at the same time, they'd rather the issues that are going to arise be vetted in a timely way among the city boards and commissions by those who have the expertise and time to do so. In the end, either it's going to cost on the front end, or it's going to cost on the back end, and they'd rather it cost on the front end, rather than a double dip. So, with that, I like Mr. Bartlet's, at least in concept, suggestion of perhaps an initial joint review. That might be more time-efficient. But I think in the end, something needs to change where the PC has an appropriate role that will both support the intent of the average unit density incentive program, which is to encourage development of this type of rental housing, and at the same time, not overburden HLC and ABR or the applicants. Lastly, we have a process currently by which, for example, the staff hearing officer review of projects can be called up to the planning commission on a requested basis by the commission. But that then is sort of a passive role for the commission, and it requires the commission to be further burdened to monitor those projects that we think may be appropriate to come back to us for review, or perhaps there are members of the public that want it to come to the review. I don't think that's an appropriate, sort of ad hoc role for the planning commission to have regarding this incentive program. So, I'd like to see a more permanent, official, embedded role for us, whatever that looks like, at the end of this process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I see some combination of everything you've heard so far. I like Mr. White's threshold idea. I totally endorse Mr. Bartlet's idea of involvement with the planning commission, not just on thresholds, but on a response from either of the liaisons. Both the liaisons we have right now are extremely well-versed in both the general plan and the issues that come before the HLC and the ABR. So, I'd hate to lose the ability to leverage that talent. Also, if I heard, and also in defense to Mr. Hotchkiss's comment too, over time and money and grating the playing field, if I heard you say that however you see this mutating will actually cost dollars to the applicant, I have a hard time with that, because this is an unintended consequence that's a result of our project, the general plan, our program, and pursues our goals, not the goals of the developer. So, if there's a way, obviously, there should be a way to minimize the inconvenience of time and to take away the disincentive of money through this process. I would support that.
Mr. Rouse?
Very constructive comments, and the suggestion of the project review team, a strike force of some sort being set up, really understands what's being intended by the policy language that is, that formulated the AUD, and then really helps to facilitate, and really understands the intention to facilitate rental projects within this 250-unit experiment would be very helpful. I really appreciate that suggestion. Clarity is really going to be important, coming into this process with all these possible twists and turns. It might go this way, it might go that way. I mean, that's just, that's almost worse than extra time, because you just don't know what to prepare for. So, when a... As Mr. Nelson suggests, when a project comes in and they've designed it to meet all the requirements under the policy, and then they get to ABR and HLC... to meet all the requirements under the policy, and then they get to ABR and HLC, and then it becomes a land use conundrum, that's not right. And I think we need to be very clear with the design review boards, and this is where staff is critically important, and the attorney's office as well. What is the limit of their purview? We need to be very clear about that, and so that they do do their job, the one they've done for forever historically, but not to extend into PC territory. So, that begs the question, I think, that's been raised here, and I like the suggestion. I think there is a role for Planning Commission. I'm not sure what it is, but the intention is to facilitate these. They are going to be the first one in the block. It is going to be a compatibility issue, and HLC and ABR are not, you know, they're not equipped, in a sense, to deal with this with the new, with a new use or new way of using these land resources. The other, one other comment, that, you know, commercial development in a C2 zone, for instance, could get approval where a similar rental could have, there could be like a lot of fear or concerns associated with it, and suddenly it gets a reduced-scale project, and that concerns me. It, by nature, has less impacts on traffic and some of these other things that Mr. Rouse brought up a minute ago, but yet there's sort of a perception somehow that because people live there, it's going to have more impacts, which is kind of backwards. So, we need to really understand that the policy was designed to facilitate these kinds of projects. So, lastly, I want to note that there's a place to have concerns like, like at White's pet hospital, all the dogs are going to be barking day and night, and across the street is going to be somebody living there, and they may start complaining about it two years hence. There needs to be some place in the process for that kind of an issue to be taken up and then be designed in, you know, the soundproofing or the setback or whatever, designed into a project. Across the street from MTD, big buses coming and going, diesels. How do you design it so that that kind of compatibility issue is addressed? And I don't know where that is in this process, but I think it's important that we design that in.
Thank you. I will start by agreeing with Commissioner Campanella in terms of looking down the road and our goal for the validity of the test, so to speak. There's a lot of specificity in the ordinance now, and I think that partly speaks to the fact that we wanted to make the ordinance as clear and detailed as possible because it was a test. So, I think it's important to keep to the spirit of that and the spirit of the test and whatever that we end up doing. In terms of the tools available to make this process as smooth and as cost-efficient as possible, I do like the idea of a specific DRT team that would gain experience and expertise over time and be able to do a better job of reviewing these as these come back rather than a team that would, say, for example, rotate. I also think that the ABR and HLC compatibility findings are, they shouldn't change if those are the findings they use for all their projects, but they could be annotated for the specific purposes of the AUD project. How do you apply size, bulk, and scale compatibility tests for purposes of AUD? And give some city direction to the two groups on that. I do not think that ABR and HLC should be tasked with delving into, as others have said, land use issues. I think they need tools of the find, they need additional elaboration on the findings. They need a checklist of standards for these types of projects to make their decision-making process consistent from project to project. And those kind of tools, I think, would be helpful to them as they work through it. In terms of the land use issues and some of the ideas I think mentioned in the staff report in regards to trigger areas, say, for discussion items at the Planning Commission, I'm concerned using density or number of units as that trigger. And I think that it works against, for example, more units but smaller square footage versus larger units, I mean, larger square footage and lesser units, which, you know, some of the goals that we were tackling in the ordinance itself. And I don't believe that density per se is the purview of those two groups. Size, bulk, and scale does often bring up the question of density issues, but I don't think it should be in front of HLC and ABR. That brings me to, so what do you do? We have an existing ordinance. We have projects pending now. We need something now that we can use for these first projects in so they don't have to wait for something that would require an ordinance change, and I agree with that. So, we need to look at this perhaps in two different pieces, what we can do now without ordinance changes, and then what might be ordinance changes after we've had a little bit more experience. And so, I agree with that phased-in approach. One of the, a couple of the things that may or may not need ordinance changes, I'm not sure, that could be considered to single out those land use issues that could benefit from Planning Commission review without having to force it through an appeal process to get to, say, the City Council for that discussion. There is a process that is utilized sometimes for such things as substantial conformity determinations that are quite large, where it could be decided at staff level or through the land development team process that the land use issue or the consistency with the AUD project is substantial enough that just that land use discussion could be bumped to the Planning Commission for something more than a comment back to HLC but would take the land use decision portion out of the hands of the HLC and ABR, yet leave the design issues still to them. That's one possibility. And another area I see that might be an issue is if the project's exempt from CEQA, I take that to mean that the impact levels are de minimis enough that you aren't going to have the noise impacts of the pet hospital across the street and the traffic impacts are not substantial. So, I'm not concerned about those. If it has an EIR, I believe that the Planning Commission would then be certifying that EIR. So, the in-between one that I'm unclear about is what if it's a negative declaration that has some mitigation required for negative declarations? Perhaps there's a place in there to address that with the Planning Commission role rather than a HLC or ABR role. So, those would be my comments. Thank you. So, just briefly, for me, I do think the Planning Commission needs some role here, and I'm intrigued by Mr. Bartlett's suggestion upfront. I'd rather have people, I think everyone would want to know upfront what's expected of them as opposed to potentially looking at an appeal because they didn't have that discussion upfront. I don't think anyone wants that. I think in terms of incentives for rental projects, we could also look at the fee schedule and see if there's incentives that way in terms of some fees that might be different for apartments versus condo projects, if time and money is an issue. And I do think the council's going to have to look very seriously at the budget next year on staffing, not just for this, but for zoning, because we're having competing interests, and time is of the essence, and the city should not be the one that's holding things up just due to staffing issues. So, I think that's a big discussion for us next year. So, with that, Ms. Wees, clear as mud? Are you, you have some general direction? What's your next step?
Well, one thing that staff felt we absolutely, almost no matter what was said today, would do is have some discussions at the ABR and HLC about the average unit density program, the general plan, and review with them their roles, as they have reviewed many important and big projects in the community up to this point, and how that can continue along with the AUD. But beyond that, I don't think, just based on this discussion, that I got enough direction that you wanted us to go in the direction that we recommended. I think some of your comments were in that vein, but it wasn't, I didn't hear enough support for that specific idea to have the boards refer, or that that might somehow be combined with a joint meeting. So, we'll just have to work on this some more and get it on an agenda. If we can do this with just council direction versus an ordinance, that can be done more quickly. And again, I think time is of the essence, so we're probably...
Okay. So, you're going to bring it back to council with, try to synthesize something and bring back to council for direction?
Yeah. Okay. But we will get started on the conversations with the board and commissions anyway.
Thank you. Ms. Lodge, briefly, yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that I came in here thinking maybe we could do something with it and what has been happening, but as the Planning Commission liaison to the HLC, I watched the meeting, at which all of a sudden, they're being asked to deal with these issues, and it was dismay overall. And as the comments that have been made here, I think that it really, we probably got here because rental projects never went before the Planning Commission. But I think in this situation, since it is a new experimental program, I think ultimately it would save time and be more efficient to have them come to the Planning Commission for these kinds of issues and leave for the design review boards the design issues.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, that's going to wrap up the AUD discussion. Part two, I think, should be really brief. Ms. Wees already went through the full range of topics. It's everything else but ZIRs, and I'm just going to, if there are any questions or comments from the commission council or the audience on this, now's your time to bring it up. I don't know if you had anything specific. I know the hedge ordinance is coming back to, it's going through its process. Anything specific, Mr. House?
Very specific request, and that is that we hear over and again staffing as an issue. I think it'd be really important for the City Council to know exactly what level of staffing would allow us to give optimal performance and support of implementing our policies, that it goes all the way from our enforcement to ZIRs to doing the work that we just talked about.
Anything else specific on part two here? Questions or comments or from the audience? Okay. So, Mr. Hotchkiss, we will excuse you. Thank you very much. You have to recuse yourself for ZIRs. And Ms. Wees, it's back to you on ZIRs.
Thank you. I have, I think it's just one slide. So, there was an initial discussion at the council in response to council member Francisco and Mayor Schneider responding to concerns of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. Specifically, the Realtors were giving the history of a number of issues that staff and the association have been working on, and their request to consider making ZIRs optional. At the council hearing, there was a lot of concern also expressed on the part of council members about the ZIR process. But at that time, the direction was to continue to make them a requirement, but look at other things that can change to make the process more responsive to a variety of concerns. So, at the conclusion of that discussion, it kind of was quickly decided that it would be put on today's meeting for a briefing. So, since the commission and council are here together, you have a few moments to talk about what happened at the council or what you're looking for to happen at the Planning Commission. We do have a staff report just issued today for the Planning Commission next week, and it's the first item on the agenda next week. We provided quite a bit of background to the Planning Commission since they have not been as involved as council to date on the ZIR issues. Staff in the report also has recommendations for immediate action as well as some midterm actions to be further explored. In the realm of the immediate action, we are already starting to shift some of our staff resources to answer the question just along the lines of what council member House just said. If we set a new goal, say, to have 80% of the ZIRs inspected within 10 days of an application, what would it take? What level of staffing? And we're also already exploring relationships with private sector professionals that could augment staff as one option. The Planning Commission agenda also looks at other privatization options, which staff doesn't particularly favor, but, you know, we've put those out there for some discussion as well. And then, I know we have spoken a number of times about building more administrative authority and flexibility to resolve issues that we find in the ZIRs. So, that's all in the Planning Commission staff report. We expect and look forward to a good discussion there. The council, I think, wanted us to then return to the ordinance committee. And so, that's our game plan at this time, is to have a good discussion with the commission, maybe even continue it to a second meeting if necessary, and then go to the ordinance committee. So, that's it for me.
Great. I want to, are there public comment speakers? Okay. So, you have speaker slips. Why don't we go to public comment? I guess we'll start with Krista Pleiser. Okay. We'll start with Krista Pleiser, and to begin, continue by Chris Agnoli. And you have two minutes there. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, commissioners. Thank you for letting us come and briefly speak to you about ZIRs. We'll be going more in-depth next week at the Planning Commission, but this, we have a few members here just to kind of go over a few of the issues that we've been having, the disclosures that we currently have in place, which we feel go in place of what a ZIR should be doing, as well as why we believe that ZIRs are a good thing to make voluntary. On top of this, I would like to briefly mention that at City Council, it was discussed with the fact that ZIRs are there to catch a lot of the illegal units and things of that nature, and that was the whole intention and purpose of ZIRs. And we've noticed that over the past 40 years, things have changed. And what we would also like to suggest is possibly an anonymous complaint line, because we've heard multiple neighbors say, "Well, we would just say that there's an issue with this house, but we don't want our name to be associated because then we're going to have issues with our neighbors." So, we would at least like to put that out there to potentially start that and see if that helps with some more of the illegal dwelling units. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the members of the association just to go over a few issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Agnoli, be followed by Jim Caldwell.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, council members, and commissioners. My name is Chris Agnoli. I'm here on behalf of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, and I am in favor of having the zoning information reports optional. For just a quick history, back in the '70s, Realtors fully supported and actually instigated the creation of ZIRs, which were originally created as a report to disclose information about a property to potential buyers. The reports were 25 bucks, strictly informational, and any potential violations were not enforced. This was during a time of caveat emptor, or as we know it, buyer beware. Our purchase contract was only two pages, and disclosures were not the norm during a transaction. Since then, ZIRs have evolved into what they are today, but so has our industry. And the list that I just circulated around has over 40 disclosures that are commonly used in a real estate transaction. Not one of those disclosures on the list existed when zoning information reports were first introduced. And today, not only are these dozens of disclosures commonly used, additionally, with the tightening of lending practices, banks won't lend unless an appraiser has determined the value of the property, including confirming its zoning and ensuring that improvements are properly permitted. In addition to the appraisers, there's also multiple inspections being performed during the transactions. There's a lot of horror stories out there regarding ZIRs. You guys have probably heard some. You'll probably hear some more today. Things like litigation from inaccuracies and inconsistencies, the excessive costs, delays of completion, and so on. But if you were to ignore all of those and just forget about them, in my opinion, the ZIRs should become optional because they simply aren't needed. Not with the required disclosures that we use today, not when there isn't any accountability from those who create the reports, and not when we have to tell our buyers that they cannot rely on the reports because of the inaccuracies. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Jim Caldwell, be followed by Adrienne Shaholi.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, councilmen, and commissioners. Good morning, Madam Mayor, councilmen and commissioners. I'm Jim Caldwell. I've been working on this project for about four years now, and instead of it getting better, it seems to have gotten more complex, so that's why we're here today. We definitely, and when I say "we," the public and Realtors, support making zoning information reports optional. Part of my contentions are the fact that an alarming amount of the reports that are issued are inaccurate. This inaccuracy creates problems not only at the point of time when the sale is going through, but in future transactions, because buyers today rely on the report. Two, three, four years from now, they go to sell their house, and all of a sudden additional issues come up, and now we have stalemates, which leads to litigation, as Chris noted. This obviously creates distrust in the system, which down the road then kind of eliminates the American way and makes the seller of a property have to prove that they're right versus the way we would normally do it in this country. So that's the issues that I see. The second issue that I'm really concerned about is the cost of these reports. You have a report that is inaccurate, today unnecessary because of the total number of disclosures that we do require in the real estate industry. We've had research that's shown that less than 5% of the communities throughout California have in any fashion a mandatory zoning report. So I would look at that and say, why have other people ceased to do them? The other issue is the cost in Santa Barbara, which is $245, I mean, is...
Mr. Caldwell, I think you're...
$465.
The aliens are coming, and your time is up, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Shiholy, followed by Kyle Kemp, and then Laurel Abbott. You can take over where he left off, if you'd like.
Oh, I'm just speaking on one thing, Madam Mayor, councilmen, commissioners, staff. Hello. I'm talking about the timing of the zoning information report, which has gone from an information report to a full compliance property report. And is it really fit in the time of a 30-day escrow, which is when we are doing now? Let's just say we get the report in the 15 days, as we're supposed to. What other things are happening in that escrow? 17 days, the buyer is also having inspections done, comprehensive physical home inspection, a geological inspection, roof inspection, fireplace inspection, pool spa, termite, natural hazards, mold, structural, and even maybe a foundation inspection. And in all these inspections, they're getting a very comprehensive look at whether the house is. In the loan process, of course, the banks, who have had major losses, are doing a comprehensive look, not just at the borrower, but at the asset that they may take over in the future. 30-day escrow, what is the seller doing? The seller is making all the disclosures that you've gotten on there, opening up their house for all the inspections that are going on, but they're also trying to pack up their house to move. They are also trying to figure out where they're going to move to. It's a very, very stressful time, and then all of a sudden, the zoning information report that they got two years ago when they bought the house is incorrect. And now they're having to hire architects, contractors, planning, permit planners. It's just not a good fit in an escrow period. It fits better when someone's going to get a building permit, where they have already hired the architects, hired the contractors, do not have a time constraint in one of the most stressful times of their lives. So I really feel it's a bad fit for an escrow period. The primary reason for the purpose in the ordinance says it's to give information to potential buyers. We need to get it back to where Ventura is, where they give the zoning information, but not expect you to be in full compliance to what the plans that may or may not be correct are on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp?
Good morning, Madam Mayor and everybody else. Want to, first of all, say I'm here to help you solve your problems. I heard today that you guys have some staffing issues, and by making the ZIRs voluntary, I think we can help you out with that. I believe that with buyers and sellers today, making it optional will just give them still the same rights. We're not taking any rights away from them. The information we've talked about, we're providing currently right now, way in excess of what the zoning report provides. The real estate market's evolved. We've evolved to a completely different standard. The standard is way beyond what it was 20 years ago. And for the most part, we're implementing a fine on our citizens because of the fact they bought a house in Santa Barbara. That's the way it feels. It feels like a fine. They have to prove to you, the city, that they bought this house and they have done nothing to the property, and it's costing them $500 when they could go out and get a professional to come in and give them that same evaluation. Thank you.
Ms. Abbott?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and the commissioners. I am Laurel Abbott. I'm the president of the Association of Realtors this year. That being said, this is not just a Realtor issue. When we did our petition, 40% of the people who signed that petition were non- Realtors. This has really become a major concern for Santa Barbara homeowners and homebuyers. We really want you to consider making this voluntary, optional. There's just a lot of anger, and there's a lot of concern that last year's clearance will be next year's violation, and it's like walking on quicksand for people. They just, they need to be, feel like they've got some control. If it is voluntary, they can get their own permit planner to see what the issues are with the property, roll that in, and get the problem solved, rather than paying the city to tell them that they have a problem and not giving us a solution as to how to get that fixed. So again, not just from the Realtors, but from your community. Please consider making this optional. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. I know the Planning Commission's going to have a full hearing on this in a week, but are there any questions or things people want to bring up at this point? Mr. Francisco and then Ms. Lodge.
Ms. Wees, one of the ideas that they mentioned there was doing a zoning inspection when somebody pulls a building permit.
Is your mic on, Mr. Francisco?
It is.
Okay. Can't hear you.
What are the numbers there? Do you know? I mean, how many building permits get pulled each year as compared to how many homes get sold each year?
I'm pretty sure the number of ZIRs that we do in a year is somewhere around 500. Yeah. And I don't know how many building permits get pulled a year, but it is substantially greater than that. Danny, do you have any idea? About 3,000. Now, that is probably all building permits. Oh, Larry Cassidy's here.
Mr. Cassidy?
But ZIRs are done for residential property only, so...
Larry Cassidy with Building and Safety. So the question was, how many permits total?
Well, actually, total residential building permits would be the interesting one.
I don't have the actual breakdown on that. I know we issue approximately 28 to 3,000, 2,800 to 3,000 permits a year. I would estimate half of those are residential and half are commercial.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lodge and then Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Schwartz?
Well, my question is the same, and I guess I would just, to tee up for next week, to go back to what's referenced in the memo that the mayor and Mr. Francisco brought forward, and it references our zoning ordinance language. So I would just ask us to be prepared next week to delve into the zoning ordinance language and whether or not, as it currently reads, it allows us to provide that opportunity to sellers. So right out of the gate, when they know they're going to put their house on the market, to come forward with a zoning, a ZIR request, if in fact, we continue that process.
I can quickly answer that now. People can apply for a zoning information report at any time. We will accept an application for a ZIR before a property is even listed. So there's no limitation on when you apply for a ZIR.
Mr. Thompson and Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you. We're going to have a lot of time to discuss this next week, but I would just point out two things that come to my mind, and that is, no matter what we do, we need to look at what our objective is in having this ZIR ordinance. Is it to protect the public, the city in general? Is it to protect the buyer? Is it to protect the seller from legal comeback from the buyer? So we ought to look at what the ultimate objective is. And I would also point out that the title of it tends to think, make me think that it's informational, zoning information report, not zoning enforcement report. So we're going to have a lot of time to discuss this next week, I guess, but those are two thoughts that come to my mind right now.
Mr. Bartlett and then Mr. Rouse?
Well, I think Commissioner Thompson took part of my question away, ZIR versus ZER. But if an owner does a voluntary ZIR and then opts not to sell the property, are then they obligated to make whatever's identified on the list, or is it only upon sale of the property?
We will talk more about this at the Planning Commission because not all violations are referred to immediate enforcement. Only certain ones are. And what do we do with ZIRs that are not referred to enforcement, but then later when the applicant comes in for building permits? How are our issues followed up then? That's something we'll talk about in more detail.
Mr. Rouse and then Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've been talking about the transaction time, but somebody also brought up remodeling, I say post-transaction time. So how would that new property owner then guarantee or know that his property was in compliance with city records when he goes to pull a permit for a new remodel? And I say this from personal experience, and I had a negative experience. So that's one of my concerns in this process, is that are the records inaccurate so they don't come back to the property owner and say, "Well, your property's out of compliance. You have to correct this prior to getting a permit for your model." And hopefully, I'll address that next week.
Maybe it's the same kind of question. One of the things that startled me was the fact that we don't have any accountability for the accuracy of the city's reports. And so I hope, I guess it's a request that in the conversation with the Planning Commission, that we're ready to really talk about our accountability for accuracy and the potential for problems if there is inaccuracy moving forward.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it was clear at the City Council hearing that the council decided that ZIRs are valuable and that we want to make them a requirement. I think the question has been settled, with all due respect to the industry, that we are not, it's off the table that we're considering whether or not they're optional. And I would also request that there not be this hyperbolic language going forward about every report is inaccurate and every report is unnecessary. That's not true. The council heard the industry and said, "Let's make improvements. Let's make sure there's accountability." I just want to remind people, that's what we're doing now. And I do want the process to be improved and to give assurance to the buyer, to the seller, to the industry, to the community. I just, I believe the sky is not falling here, and we're improving this important process. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah. Ms. Pujol?
Thanks. Yeah, there were speaker comments referencing existing disclosure requirements. Some of them sounded very specific to zoning information, particularly the one that dealt with an appraiser requirement. So I would request copies of those related disclosure requirements to be provided to us when we discuss this at the Planning Commission and our next agenda. Maybe someone from the Realtors Industry Association of Realtors could provide that to us in advance. I'd be interested in seeing that. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Just very briefly, and all due respect to my fellow councilmember, my comments at least, and I don't know how we, I'm going to go back and review the minutes. My comments were, only if we can guarantee, have an accountability for the accuracy of our reports and that we can deliver them in a timely way, would I continue supporting them. I would be against keeping them going, having the city require them and the city doing them if we can't guarantee their accountability, be accountable for their accuracy, and we can't deliver them in a timely way. So I want to just be on the record. I'm one councilmember who would not support ZIRs if we can't do those two things.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, again, tee up for staff in a discussion with us next week. I had an exchange with Ms. Wees about practices in Pasadena out of watching the council hearing. And so what I would also be interested in, because I think we need to do this across the board, considering momentous changes, potential changes like this, is to understand the practices and best practices of other communities, like communities, where we can learn from other communities or learn not to do what they've been doing. So I think next week is a good time, an opportune time for us to talk about that. And if we could hear back from staff, that would be very helpful from my perspective. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's a good segue to your conversation. Next week, we look forward to hearing what you have to say about it. So anything else, Ms. Wees? Okay. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.